Good morning, members. For this session, we'll deal with the health portfolio. I'll invite the secretary for food and health to give some opening remarks. Members may then ask questions. Please press the request to speak button if you want to do so. Secretary. Thank you, Chairman. Good morning, Chairman, members. Sorry, speaker is off mic. Sorry, speaker is off mic. I'll invite our staff to check your console. Secretary. Chairman and honorable members, in 2020-21, the estimated recurring government expenditure on healthcare is eighty-seven point one billion dollars, accounting for seventeen point nine percent of government's total recurring expenditure. From 2017-18 to 2020-21, the recurring provision of healthcare has recorded a cumulative growth of thirty-nine percent. New and additional resources available in this financial year are mainly used for various enhanced or newly introduced public healthcare services. For the support for the hospital authority HA, the government will continue to increase progressively the recurring provision for the HA having regard to population growth rates and demographic changes. In 2020-21, a recurring provision of seventy-five billion dollars, which represents an increase of thirty-five percent over the provision in 2017-18, will be provided for the HA to implement interalaya major staff retention initiatives as follows. First, enhancing the special retired and rehired scheme to encourage experienced doctors to continue to service on contract terms in HA after retirement until the age of sixty-five. Second, creating opportunities for around two hundred associate consultants to be promoted to consultants within the next five years. And third, providing additional allowance for registered nurses who have attained specialty qualities, qualifications. It is estimated that additional expenditure for the above will increase substantially from around hundred sixty million dollars in twenty-one, twenty-two to around one point two billion dollars in twenty-five, twenty-six. The government has already committed resources on this front. Besides the recurring provision of ten point nine billion dollars, which represents an increase of three point eight percent over the twenty nineteen-twenty revised estimate, we will provide it to the Department of Health for enhancing services implementing key measures. They are, first, new initiatives, namely implementing a patricious vaccination program for pregnant women, prevention of mother-to-child transmission hepatitis B, and extension of baby-friendly maternal and child health centers destination involving twenty million dollars. Second, implementing the Colorado Cancer Screening Program. And thirdly, continuing with enhanced measures to improve the uptake rate of seasonal influenza vaccination and for providing schoolgirls with human papillomavirus vaccination skills to prevent cervical cancer. In light of the development of the novel coronavirus infection in Hong Kong, the government would allocate four point seven billion dollars from the anti-epidemic fund to the HA for enhancing support in combating the epidemic. The HA will deploy the funding in different aspects in response to the epidemic. With regards to manpower, the HA announced on the twenty-fourth of February that it would provide frontline staff engaging in high-risk duties under the public hospitals' emergency response level with special allowance in order to show appreciation and recognition to them. The HA will deploy the resources flexibly having regard to the development of the situation so as to provide optimal support to frontline healthcare staff, healthcare facilities. In 2016, the government introduced the first ten-year hospital development plan and earmarked two hundred billion dollars for its implementation. Various projects are underway. The entire plan is expected to provide over six thousand additional beds and more than ninety additional operating theaters. We're pending a fund approval from the Finance Committee for the four projects in the current legislative session and look forward to your support. Meanwhile, the HA is actively taking forward the planning of the second ten-year HDP. It is expected that over nine thousand additional beds and other new healthcare facilities can be provided to meet the projected service demands up to 2036. To expand the capacity for professional healthcare training, the government has earmarked twenty billion dollars to upgrade increased teaching facilities of the University of Hong Kong, CU of Hong Kong and Hong Kong Polytechnic University. Around hundred eighty million dollars was allocated to the three universities in 2018-19 for carrying out short-term renovation and enhancement of facilities. The government will seek to resubmit the projects of the three universities, totaling some one point seven billion dollars to access as soon as possible in the current legislative session. The government will continue to follow up with the three universities on the remaining medium and long-term works projects with a view to further upgrading and increasing the healthcare relevant teaching facilities. Primary healthcare. The government will continue to allocate resources to vigorously promote district-based primary healthcare services with a view to enhancing the public's capability in self-health management and providing community support for chronic patients. The first district health center, DHC, in Hong Kong was set up in Kwai Chee District last year. In the 2019 process, Chief Executive announced that the setting up of DHCs in all eighteen districts will be expedited. It is expected that within the term of the current government, DHCs in six more districts in smaller interim, DHC expresses in the remaining eleven districts will be established. The government has earmarked a recurring expenditure of six hundred fifty million dollars for setting up DHCs in six districts in the coming two years. Under the sum of around six hundred million dollars will be allocated to subsidize the establishment of DHC expresses by non-governmental organizations to provide district health promotion, consultation, and chronic disease care services. The social incidents in the last six months or so and the recent outbreak of epidemic have inevitably affected the mental health of some people in Hong Kong. Against this background, the DH launched the Mental Health Info Station, a one-stop portal clustering mental health information for people who need support. The government has also earmarked an annual recurring provision of fifty million dollars for ongoing mental health promotion and public education initiative under which a series of public activities will be organized to promote the importance of mental health and public, um, under which a series of activities will organize to promote the importance of health and encourage people to seek professional help when needed. We've contacted NGOs to provide free services through their programs like Care for All in Time to Kill for people suffering from mental distress triggered by the social incidents or the epidemic. Besides, we'll continue to work closely with the Advisory Committee on Mental Health to coordinate follow-up with development bureaus and departments for taking forward measures for the enhancement of mental health services. The government has incorporated Chinese medicine into the healthcare system of Hong Kong and allocated more recurrent resources to develop Chinese medicine services. On development of Chinese Medicine Hospital, when the course of changing, they expect to commence the second stage of the tender process in the middle of this year. We hope to identify a nonprofit-making organization by end of the year for the operation of the hospital. The government will increase the recurrence prevention for the eighteenth district Chinese medicine clinics administered by the HA. Starting from March this year, the government will provide in these eighteen clinics an annual quota of about six hundred twenty thousand for subsidized Chinese medicine general consultation, trainer, and acupuncture services at a standard fee of hundred twenty dollars. In addition, starting from March twenty twenty, the additional daily fee for integrated Chinese Western medicine inpatient services available at seven public hospitals will reduce to hundred twenty dollars from two hundred. Since the launch of the five hundred million dollar Chinese Medicine Development Fund in June last year, total of ten million dollars have been approved on to provide funding for a sector like nurturing CM talent, conducting CM-related research and projects, related promotion of the CM. And the CMDF has benefited different levels of practitioners and the drug sector as well as nonprofit-making and academic institutions promoting CM development here. The fund will continue to approve applications and launch different funding projects to further facilitate the demand in Hong Kong. We are happy to answer questions from you. Some of you haven't put on a surgical mask for yourself and for others. Please put, uh, please wear a surgical mask. Uh, I have to be strict about the time management because we have the time until, um, twelve forty. Uh, we have to be fair to all members. Roy Kwong, Ching Chong Tai, Wu Ji Hui, Chan Lo Yung, Gao Zhi Mo, K K Kwok, Regina Ye, Alice Mac, Michael Tian, Helena Wong, Jimmy Ng, Pierre Chen, Rosen O, Xiao Ka Chen, Joseph Lee, Tony Che, Pun Shiu Ping, Fernando Zheng, Zhang Lai Wan, Professor Liu, Ray Chen. So, Mr. Roy Kwong, Roy Kwong, four minutes. Thank you. Carrie Lam's administration is, um, causing us a lot of hardship. Now, the latest news is that the beauty parlors to be closed. Now, they are just having at-home measures. They always give us, uh, directions or directives for fourteen days each time. Now, for bars, restaurants, uh, gyms, beauty parlors. Well, all the businessmen are having a lot of hardship and they're crying out for help. But then your policies are changing all the time and they are making us, um, having a hard time. So, Secretary, you have always been talking about speedy response, but in fact, it is at a snail's pace. Usually, in a few days' time, you will, um, come up with more measures. Experts are saying that you aren't stopping it at the source and so the critical patients are still pressing the disease. I'll give you enough time. Tell us about the way forward. Businesses are about to, uh, close. They can't support themselves anymore. So what further measures are you, uh, going to introduce? Otherwise, we'll be shocked and surprised. Secretary, when it comes to the control of the disease, we have to resort to multiple-point public health measures. Mr. Roy Kwong talked about CA five nine nine F and G in relation to those two regulations. And in fact, just this morning, I made an announcement about the latest, um, directives which have been gathereded. The purpose of them is as follows. That is, we'd like to enhance social distancing and we hope that the people in Hong Kong will not be having too much, uh, gathering. If you look at the threat of the disease in March, for the number of confirmed cases, we have seen an increase drastically. Of course, some of them or most of them are imported cases, but there were still some local cases. So what is worrying is that in Hong Kong, if we are not able to reduce the risk of local transmission, if we cannot break the transmission link, then, um, the outbreak would continue. And in fact, this is not something that the healthcare system can cope with. So against such a background, we do have an overall plan. We'd like to make use of CA five double nine F and five double nine G. Would like to do our utmost to enhance social distancing. This is our policy.
Secretary, um, before you are able to overcome the virus, um, many operators would go out of business. Um, the retail sector has been hit very hard and now, uh, the whole, um, public are waiting what you would do. If this drags on for another month or so, all the, um, shops would be out of business. We acknowledge this. That is why the Chief Executive announced earlier that for the anti-epidemic fund, it would seek to support sectors affected, for example, the catering and retail sectors. And, um, there were calls that, um, certain sectors were not included in the first round. And that is why the Chief Executive and the administration, uh, looking at the second round of the anti-epidemic fund and we hope to include, um, things we did not include in the first round. Can you, um, tell, um, Carrie Lam to adopt a more holistic approach or else the whole Hong Kong would suffer? Dr. Chen Hong Tai. At the beginning of the outbreak, a lot of frontline healthcare professionals were concerned about the lack of personal protective equipment when they discharged their duties. Given the pandemic, the U.S. would request manufacturers such as 3M to restrict the export of, um, gear including PPEs. All along, there has been concerns about the import and supply of PPE. And I have a more specific question. As you know, at public hospitals, there were adjustments to the non-emergency surgeries. Of course, um, the services could not, um, all stop because, um, the conditions of some patients might deteriorate. But in the recent week or two, some healthcare professionals complained that at certain, um, clusters, the non-emergency services have, um, returned to normal and the health profession, healthcare professionals were concerned about the supply of PPE and, um, some patients could be infected. Secretary, do you know the current arrangement for non-emergency surgeries at different clusters? Um, the HA would be able to furnish more information since the start of the epidemic. For certain non-emergency procedures, including surgeries, um, have been, um, cut back by the HA in order to facilitate manpower deployment and epidemic control work. I'd like to defer to the HA for further information. Doctor Ko, like the secretary said, at the start of the outbreak, um, we had to make adjustments to the overall services in light of the, um, demand for PPE. Through different channels of procurement, the current stockpile has somewhat improved. But as a whole, we have, um, cut back on non-emergency surgeries. Um, that way, we can, um, reduce, um, the use of PPE and the need for patients to come to hospitals. The non-emergency surgeries um, include surgeries such as, um, those for cancer patients. But, um, we should realize that, um, certain surgeries could not be postponed for too long. That's why some of the, um, non-emergency surgeries, um, still take place. Um, we have, um, cut back the number of non-emergencies surgeries by about half. Chairman, would the specific, um, hospitals be able to, um, consider the arrangement? For example, for dental, um, surgeries, um, they are rarely, um, urgent, as far as I understand. A- apparently, um, non, non-emergency dental surgeries still take place as usual. Would that be the arrangement? Our colleagues would assess the, um, clinical situation of patients. But as a whole, we would, um, first, um, proceed with, um, surgeries for patients who could not wait for too long. Since the thirty-first of December till the end of Jan, January, well, it has been, um, well, a lot, it has been two or three months and some of the treatments or procedures could not wait that long. So in terms of resource management, we would ask our, um, clinical staff to look at the, um, clinical conditions in arranging the surgeries. Mr. Wu Ji Hui, Professor Yun Kwok Yong pointed out that, um, we are dealing with two, um, situations. First of all, the resumption of school and work on the mainland might lead to a third wave of transmission to Hong Kong. Secondly, different countries have greatly reinforced their screening efforts in face of the epidemic. They have carried out a lot of quick tests in order to identify possible carriers and facilitate, uh, separation from, uh, the rest of the people. I have two questions. For the Center for Health Protection, or the Secretary, I wonder what you think about Professor Yun's reminder. Professor Yun also pointed out that, um, you have been carrying out about one thousand tests every day or a little bit more than one thousand. Have you, um, exhausted the testing capacity of the government laboratories? Do you have plans to enhance the testing capacity? Some countries have reinforced the number of tests and their screening capacity in order to identify the invisible carriers. Is this something you would do? If the capacity of the labs are limited, I saw that the Polytechnic University and some biotech companies have come up with quick tests. And, um, Germany has adopted another approach to enhance the overall testing capacity. Is this something the government would consider in fighting the epidemic so that we can identify the invisible carriers in the community as soon as possible? Thank you very much. In terms of the epidemic in the mainland and overseas, all along, the Department of Health and CHP have been monitoring the situation, including the risk levels, the number of confirmed cases and whether, um, there are confirmed or imported cases. In terms of testing, last night, the Department of Health, um, announced the latest, um, testing arrangements for persons arriving in Hong Kong. All along, testing has been an important part of our work. For this, um, novel coronavirus, I, we, we found that many asymptomatic, um, individuals, um, were diagnosed eventually. So, um, in order to, um, contain and isolate, um, testing is essential. So how do you go about it? If you do not expand your scheme of work, you are only, um, conducting work at the, um, boundary control points. Some biotech companies came up with quick test kits. Would this be something the government considers? I would, um, talk about the overall plan and the Department of Health can supplement. Can you allow me some time, Chairman? I hope the, um, other members would not be repeating the same question later. The testing is not just, um, carried out on those arriving in Hong Kong. Since the nineteenth of March, the DH has been conducting tests on persons arriving in Hong Kong, uh, whether they are conducted at the, um, public health laboratories or the HA. And the services were extended to the, um, odd, for the general outpatient, um, clinics. And recently, it was, um, expanded to include private medical practitioners and the numbers have been going up. From January to April so far, the numbers have, um, gone up across the board. We have, um, conducted more than one hundred and ten thousand tests. And we saw that the general awareness, um, towards receiving the tests has also been improved. And the DH has expanded its work on persons arriving in Hong Kong. Please be brief. The, um, public health laboratories and the HA's labs have been enhancing their testing capabilities. At the moment, the, um, public health laboratories can test three thousand samples per day. And we have tier one, that is, um, notifiable, um, cases. And this includes pneumonia cases and, um, cases without a travel history. And at the third tier, at the HA, um, all pneumonia patients would receive the test. And from the nineteenth of February, it was expanded to include A and E ward, um, patients with symptoms at A and E wards and outpatient clinics. And tier five, we have expanded the scheme to private medical practitioners and they can use the DH's, DH's services. And tier six, all the persons arriving from, via the airport, they would all be tested according to CA five nine nine E. Our current ca- capacity is, um, three thousand tests per day. FHB, H zero one zero and H one one six about face masks and the manpower provision for number one one six. I, um, the, the question was about the procurement of gowns, masks, goggles, disposable caps and gloves by the HA, but no single figure was given. You are saying that, um, the procurement is underway to tackle COVID-nineteen. And as of, um, mid-March, the stockpile of, um, N-ninety-five respirators was only at one month for the HA. For other protective equipments such as masks, goggles, gowns, et cetera, exceeded one month. So in terms of N-ninety-five respirators and PPE, were they, were the stockpiles at historical lows? Um, were they, um, at, um, a warning level? The number of confirmed cases, um, will soon exceed one thousand. So is, um, is this a severe warning sign? You are now allocating four point seven billion to the HA. Um, nine hundred and thirty-six confirmed cases, two hundred and thirty-six discharged, six hundred and seventy-three hospitalized, four deaths. If we discount the deaths and discharged patients, um, twenty-three, uh, yet to enter the hospitals, they are, um, at large in our, in the community. Would the HA accept the fact that twenty-three, um, diagnosed patients are yet to enter hospitals? They are either at home or at quarantine centers. And the situation is especially bad for those who are still staying at home. Are you going to use Chongyang Estate to, um, treat diagnosed patients or are you going to build a temporary hospital? If it's the latter, where would you find the, um, staff or manpower, um, for zero zero nine zero ten? And from twenty seventeen to eighteen, the staff, um, si- to nineteen to twenty, the num- the staff provision for specialists, um, doctors have been going down. So you, you have been losing a lot of experienced doctors. And in face of the epidemic, where would you find the manpower to deal with the, um, soon-to-be one thousand confirmed cases? In reply, number zero zero nine zero one zero, regarding the, um, uh, wastage of, um, specialist doctors, um, what would be the overall impact on healthcare quality? Thank you very much.
Thank you for Miss, um, Miss Chen's questions. The HA can take the question on the stockpile of the respirators. And then as to the other question, that is, the latest manpower figures, HA can also answer the question. But still, from Miss Chen's reference, just now you talked about people who were not able to, uh, go to hospital quickly even though they have been confirmed. Of course, this is not satisfactory. This happened earlier on. And for the HA, I think the HA has now come up with, uh, tier-two isolation beds. And as a result, uh, this has been eased and they're trying their best. No, I have the figures from your website. The most up-to-date figure is twenty-three. It is not just unsatisfactory, it's unacceptable. Yes, I can ask the HA to tell us about the latest approach as to what to do with the confirmed patients. Doctor Ko, thank you, Chair. Yes, I would like to provide the answers. First of all, regarding the PPEs, we have announced, uh, the latest figures. Two, uh, twenty-five billion, um, surgical masks, two point eight million protective gowns, and then two million N-ninety-five respirators. I think, uh, you know that since the outbreak, the figures have been fluctuating. We have been procuring, uh, with all our efforts. And of course, for the supply of PPEs, it is difficult to get the supply. There are many restrictions, limitations in the supply chain globally, but we're still trying our best to increase the supply. Well, for such figures, you can see that it is a slight improvement. One billion more surgical masks and two hundred thousand more protective gowns. We are doing our best and we are getting re- uh supplies being filled all the time. But we're still worried about the global picture. Therefore, we are having different uh suppliers, we are sourcing from different markets, trying to get the gowns. And we'll keep an eye on the level of gowns, and then we have to be very cautious in relation to the use of the P P Es. Well, um we have to bear in mind the seriousness of the outbreak when it comes to the planning of our services. Since middle of March, there have been more and more imported cases. The number of cases has spiked. Many returnees have been confirmed. In February, um on any one day, the number of uh new cases is in a single digit. Now we're having fifty or sixty. In the middle of uh March, on the twentieth of March, at A W E, we set up our test center so that those returnees can quickly uh get the test um and get the test result known. We have also activated our tier-two wards. More than a hundred patients have been transferred to such tier-two isolation beds. And we have also got the the tents outside the hospitals, so as to deal with patients with mild symptoms. Now, the DAH has screened the patients. Uh we have uh made drastic improvements in relation to the question of uh confirmed patients not getting hospitalized soon. Well, basically, we're able to admit them within the same day. But sometimes, we need to liaise with the patients, and therefore, the figures we give you may not be most up-to-date. But usually, if you look at the figures in the morning, usually it's a single-digit figure. We're still uh contacting the patients. You have to understand that after confirming a case, you need to inform the patient. The patient may make some preparations, and it also depends on the conditions of the patient. If the symptoms are more um visible, and if uh the patient is uh having uh serious conditions, uh he or she will be admitted to the A and E department. Claudia Mo, four minutes. Now, the hospital authority is not part of the government, is not a government department. And therefore, the HA doesn't get the surgical masks free of charge. The R H K is a government department, and yet it is being attacked physically and verbally, day in, day out. Now, businesses are closing, classes are suspended, work is suspended. But then we are not closing our border, uh boundary to the mainland. Now, for Wuhan, uh the lockdown will be lifted today. Now, I understand that in the world, nineteen countries have their first case of confirmed um infection coming from Wuhan. Now, you still welcome people from Wuhan for tourism and visiting relatives. Do you think that this is not a policy decided on the basis of public health? Rather, it is a matter of one country considerations. Well, let me clarify. For the visas for Wuhan residents from Hubei uh province, they are still not getting it. Now, for people coming from Wuhan, Hubei, and other places, for those who are admitted into Hong Kong, they are all Hong Kongers. They have been there in the past twelve, uh fourteen days, and so they are subject to compulsory home quarantine. And of course, uh we provide other services, and we try to understand their physical conditions during the quarantine period. I'm sorry, I need to interrupt you. You said that for people from Wuhan, they are not able to come to Hong Kong. But what if they go to Beijing first, or if they come via Guangzhou? Well, if the uh it is an endorsement in Wuhan, if it is a person who is a Wuhan resident, then the current policy says that he or she can't come into Hong Kong. I cannot understand your reply. Now, you're talking about the endorsement. If the endorsement is a Beijing endorsement, say, we're talking about Wuhan resident. But then if he gets the endorsement uh in Beijing, Guangzhou, or Shenzhen, or whatever, then how can you tell? Well, for inbound travelers, in relation to their uh sort of um uh status and whether they can come in, it is all risk-based. It's not a matter of their status or identity, it's a matter of their travel history, whether they have been there in the past fourteen days. If they don't tell you, how can you know? You're still welcoming them with open arms. If you ask them to fill out the form, they just don't fill it out, or if you ask them questions, they don't tell you. Ms. Mo, ever since we introduced the policy, all the way up till this moment, I think the number of inbound visitors has drastically fallen. I'm not interested in the figures, I'm talking about the source, I'm talking about the risk. It seems that you don't know at all. Let her finish her reply first, Ms. Mo. Well, regarding the overall risk, we have been carrying out an assessment. For our immigration policy, we have a policy, and our immigration officers are very experienced. And I'm sure... How can you know that the immigration officers are very experienced? You shift the blame. Immigration officers will do what you tell them. Ms. Regina Yu. Well, the local public security officers will carry out the endorsement. Wuhan residents can't go to Beijing to get it. You are too ignorant. Ms. Regina Yu, this is not a point of order, but thank you for providing us with that piece of information. Next, KK Quoc. Dr. KK Quoc, four minutes. Would you like to ask questions, Dr. KK Quoc? Would you like to ask questions? Four minutes, Chairman. Well, the government is having a catching-up game. It's only today that they are closing the beauty parlors and massage parlors. Last time, bars and karaoke's were not closed at the first instance. So for everything, they are just catching up, they are lagging behind. Professor Jun has said that you don't cry, only you don't cry until you see the coffin. Now, today, the lockdown of Wuhan has been lifted. Now, from the replies given to us, it seems that well, it's a matter of luck whether a Wuhan resident will tell us the truth. We just have to wait for luck to be on our side, whether they tell us the truth. How come that you failed us so much? Everything is so disappointing. For Professor Jun's point, he said that there was this senior official who would not cry, would not shed tears until he or she would see the coffin. Is that you, Professor Chen, or Carrie Lam? You need to respect me. You better ask Professor Jun, you better not ask the secretary. Why would you interrupt me? What has it to do with you, Chan Kim Po? You shut up. KK Quoc, if you continue to yell, I'm going to ask you to go out. The first warning. What, what are you warning me for? You are disrupting the order of this meeting. In what way? It is a legitimate question. I asked her who he was talking about. You're wasting time. You are wasting my time, Chan Kim Po. You shut up. You will continue to yell, I'll ask you to go out. This is my second warning. You are taking up the floor. Who is yelling? It's you. Well, if you want to ask who he was referring to, you better ask Professor Jun, not the secretary. What has it to to do with you? Are you a subordinate of the officials? Don't waste time. Chan Kim Po, what has it to do with you? Come back to this meeting, don't waste time. You are wasting my time. Don't try to create chaos so that the meeting has to be suspended. I won't give you the chance to do so. Secretary, ignore him. Tell me, who's the person who won't cry until the coffin is seen? The chief executive has an expert panel. Professor Jun is one of the four experts on the panel. Myself and the C G from time to time will have a communication with Professor Jun. And he has given a lot of valuable advice to us. Alright, so it's Carrie Lam, not you. Now, when are we going to close the boundary? When are we going to treat the Wuhan residents like all other inbound travelers at the airport? That is, they have to stay at a point, at a place to wait for the test results to be known. And then, we are supposed to get two blocks for infectious diseases. We've only got one. That's the recommendation from the SARS outbreak. You owe us two blocks. When are we going to get them? And then, um Carrie Lam clapped her hands. I'm afraid that there is a dagger behind the smiles. Are you going to go after the healthcare workers who cried for the closure of the boundary? Would be a matter of settling the scores afterwards. Now, in this outbreak, many citizens have suffered. The Hong Kong government has failed to catch up and stay on top of the outbreak. Do you have to take responsibility? Secretary. First of all, for people returning from Wuhan and Hubei, well, from the press release of the Department of Health, starting from today, some uh specimen bottles will be given to such travelers for the sake of the COVID nineteen test. In addition, they are subject to a fourteen-day compulsory home quarantine. Uh this is something that is required of them under the law. So we'll continue to assess the risk in this regard. If you look at the figures, in fact, Professor Jun, together with the HA, the DAH, and the CHP, I think that's what they agree on in relation to their testing. There are four hundred and sixty-nine returnees, and one was tested positive. Four hundred and sixty-nine returning from uh Hubei. So it is an indicator for our approach in relation to people coming from Wuhan or Hubei.
Dr. Ko, in terms of the epidemic, Dr. Quoc asked about the um blocks for communicable diseases. We would um follow up, um we will monitor the situation based on the development of the epidemic. We will have a ten-year hospital development plan. We will see whether we would um revisit the issue based on the development of the epidemic. Mrs. Regina Yu, I'd like to ask about reply number zero nine four, point of order. Chairman, you spent a lot of time speaking, and the official did not answer my question. He did not answer my question. You spent uh one or two minutes of my speaking time slot. Well, Mrs. Regina Yu could speak whenever she want, and now you are, you do not allow the official to answer my question. Many members do not have the time to ask questions. Dr. KK Quoc, you do not enjoy privileges. Well, but you were um speaking during my time slot. Please be silent. The public are watching. Chairman, I'd like to ask about reply number zero nine four, about the resources of the HA. In the secretary's reply, um retired doctors would be re-invited or or rehired, and uh special honorarium would be offered to doctors. It simply said you are planning to um hire a few hundred more doctors. And um for this strike on the seventh and eighth of February, more, more than three thousand nurses and more than one thousand healthcare professionals participated in this strike, which affected the manpower position of the HA. Um what measures were taken out by the HA? And um a, someone claimed that um patients were certainly not affected. I have received twenty-seven complaints already, three have applied for legal aid. Um two female um patients went blind in one or both eyes due to a um delay in a um retinal surgery. So how would the HA compensate these patients? Dr. KK Quoc, please do not leave yet. You should um listen to the HA's reply. Dr. Ko, we realized that um earlier, a few thousand um colleagues did not um report to duty due to different reasons. We looked into the reasons. Some claim that they took part in the strike, while others um gave other reasons in line with our human resources policy. We will follow up with the relevant staff, including for, from a legal perspective. Um this is an ambiguous answer. Um well, perhaps Dr. Ko does not want to upset his staff, but this is unfair to the public. Some people um were shouting slogans such as a full border closure or asking for the five demands to be met. If the HA does not take out disciplinary action in an appropriate manner, if um future strikes um occur again, how can um public health be safeguarded? For doctors, you have to have specialist qualifications. Um the Hong Kong Academy of Medicine should not grant um specialist qualifications because um they would um, the doctors would look to um turn to private practice once they become specialists. Some people, uh some doctors um are using the HA as a stepping stone. For doctors who went on strike, who were yet to become specialists, they should not be granted specialist qualifications. Secretary, thank you very much for the question. In terms of the overall manpower provision of the HA and the um recent absences, with regards to their absence and the impact on services, the HA would deal with it um with their established mechanism. So their decision was to cut back on non-emergency services. So um that is not to say that services were not affected, but the HA were aware of the situation and they were dealing with it. As for the overall manpower provision of the HA, or in terms of the overall healthcare manpower planning and provision of Hong Kong, for uh wastage rate at the HA, um we were looking at wastage of both specialists and non-specialists. That is why we rolled out manpower retention programs as one of the means to tackle the situation. Um at SARS, we are increasing the number of um places of medical students. And we want to encourage um those overseas to um return to Hong Kong and work here. So we have a series of measures in place. Ms. Elsmann, four minutes. Ms. Claudia Mo talked about the measures relating to one country, two systems. If that's the case, the immigration measures um would not only consider the work of the SAR government. On the fifth of February, the Guangdong Province Public Security um Department announced that they would stop uh processing on travel endorsements to Hong Kong and Macau. So um these endorsements were no longer issued for people to visit Hong Kong. So we, apart from looking at the work of the SAR government, we should also look at the work of the mainland departments. Of course, some people would conveniently ignore them, they would only see what they want to see. Or some, some, some of them um feel that they have certain privileges or exemptions. I'd like to um talk about F H V bracket H one five nine. In terms of equipment for frontline offices, um together with um the union, we met Dr. Ko earlier, and we asked about the adequacy of protective equipment, and they cited procurement challenges. Um it has been more than two months. I wonder whether the situation has improved. Um the um union has issued surveys to frontline Um, the um union has issued surveys to frontline practitioners and they indicated that at tier-one wards, the protective equipment are still adequate, but at tier-two wards or wards for communicable diseases, the um equipment are in high supply. There aren't enough N ninety-five respirators and protective gowns. And um the um healthcare workers have to wear purple gowns. So are there still difficulties in the procurement as of now? The HA would only order N ninety-five respirators. But in fact, KN ninety-five masks are being produced in the mainland. Would you consider procuring such gear from different places? If the HA encounters great difficulties in procuring these equipment, would the SAR um government ask the central government to donate or provide healthcare equipment to the HA? So that our healthcare professionals could um work with um sufficient protection. For details, I would um invite the HA to furnish the information. As for the HA's equipment and the relevant work of the government, uh, we understand their situation and the government logistics department is in close communication with the HA to communicate how we can help. The situation has somewhat eased. Um, a lot of the protective um equipment of the HA uh from the mainland. And in terms of the customs clearance, um, some difficulties were encountered and the government provided support to smooth out the procedures. Uh, if the HA intend to procure from the mainland, if there's anything we can help or support, this is something we would do all along. The HA, please. Thank you. In terms of PPE, um, the situation has improved recently with the support of different government departments. Um, at one point, the overall stockpile of um PPE was less than one month. The current level is more than, is at least two months. Many of our PPE is imported from the mainland, but with the earlier suspension of work and transportation on the mainland, um, the situation was difficult with the resumption of transportation and work on the mainland. The situation has improved again. For N ninety-five respirators, um, in the past, we mainly used the brand three M. Um, they were supplied by the United States. With the um global outbreak, we um anticipated um supply challenges and that is why we source alternative um suppliers, including local suppliers. We also um looked at different countries, including the possibility of um the mainland. It is important to have different supply sources. Um, we earlier purchased some PPE from suppliers in over twenty countries, but um the supply was uh nonetheless not stable, so we would continue our work on this. Mr. Michael Ten. The government has always been um slow reacting, but late is better than none. On the eighth of February, the government required um visitors from the mainland to self-quarantine for fourteen days. I described it as, the measure as a toothless tiger. On the nineteenth of March, the government um mandated all individuals on home quarantine to wear uh an electronic wristband. And um on the eighteenth of uh March, I asked for a total um border um lockdown. And earlier, I asked the government to set up um interim stations and they could only, uh, individuals could only go home if they are free of symptoms and virus. And last night, the government announced that from tomorrow, Hong Kong um residents from, returning from the UK would be sent for testing before onwards, um, before they can go home or go to the hospital. Um, for the recently confirmed cases, seventy percent traveled to the UK. Of us, I would welcome the government's move to test all these individuals. Late is better than none. At least you are able to test seventy percent of the cases. But what about the remaining thirty percent? Asia World Expo certainly has the capacity or space to test the remaining thirty percent of the people. You certainly have that capacity. If the number of confirmed cases remains high, um, and we cannot control when patients can be discharged, um, the services are almost at full capacity. If we don't have enough beds, what would be the plan? Are you going to um convert the Hong Kong Convention Exhibition Center for um treatment purposes? But would there be enough um manpower and equipment? Um, or else the diagnosed patients would not be able to, would would not be assigned a bed in hospital? The um lockdown at Hubei would be lifted tomorrow. For Hong Kong residents who have visited Hubei in the last fourteen days, would they, will they still be banned from entering Hong Kong? Thank you. From the Department of Health's press release, we would pinpoint Hong Kong residents coming from the UK and they would have to wait, uh, undergo tests and for the results to be out before they can go home. And this is um a lesson we have learned from the um people returning from Peru. For the remaining thirty percent, what would happen? The DH would look at the arrival times of flights to Hong Kong and how many um people they would have to deal with at one time. These are crucial questions because if we have too many people gathering at AWE at the same time, uh, we would have to consider the toilet facilities, et cetera. Well, it, you are only working on seventy percent of people. What about the remaining thirty? That's why I uh am wondering about that. For individuals returning from the UK in the um uh recently confirmed cases, seventy percent were the uh from, had traveled to the UK. So wha- what some percentage would it consist? Um, if it is only ten percent, then um it would not be uh worthwhile. Can you give us, can you share the figure with me later? Yes, this is something we are working towards. The second question was about beds. Like Dr. Ko said, um, the HA would provide tier-two beds and more recently, they would review the symptoms of um patients in HA hospitals and their clinical conditions and for recovering patients, they are considering community um facilities.
Dr. Ko, Dr. Ko, please. Yes, Dr. Ko. Thank you, Chair. Well, um, on the basis of the um latest outbreak, first of all, we've activated the so-called tier-two isolation beds. And certainly, it has um um resulted in obvious improvements. But the overseas experience shows us that the outbreak can worsen uh within a short period of time. Um, it may be an exponential growth, so we need to be prepared. Our experience is that the majority of the patients have mild symptoms. And then, after staying at a hospital for seven or ten days, usually patients will no longer have any symptoms. So they stay in the hospital, not for treatment, but for isolation purpose. So in the case that we see a drastic increase in the number of cases, we may want to do what overseas cities have done. That is, for patients without a lot of symptoms and no need for treatment, perhaps they can be quarantined in the community. Time is running out, so let's be brief about our uh questions and answers. Mr. Tian, uh, it's not fair to others. You follow up on your question at the HSP meeting after this one. Dr. Helena Wong.
Well, just now, um, the New People Party's Regina Yu said that the HA, the government, uh, should uh go after the healthcare workers who asked for the closing of the boundary in a industrial action. Uh, I think uh it is wrong. She's a member of the EXCO. Just like the administration, when it comes to closing the border to save Hong Kong, it is a matter of slow response. The healthcare workers went on strike because the government didn't uh close the border. They didn't want their healthcare system to collapse. So they took the steps just to force the government to do something about it. It is unforgivable for you to ask for them to be punished later on. Mrs. Yu should apologize to healthcare workers. On the one hand, you talk about punishing them. On the other hand, you are clapping hands for them. I think uh the establishment camp members are not doing justice to the healthcare workers. Let me follow up on Wu Chi Vice Pont in relation to the screening test for Wuhan pneumonia. We are really worried. On the twenty-fifth of March, Hubei's lockdown was lifted. Today, Wuhan's lockdown is lifted. Yes, since the twenty-seventh of January, anybody who has been to uh Hubei in the previous fourteen days as well as their residents would not be allowed to come to Hong Kong. Understand that we have many trains arriving in Shenzhen and they will come to Hong Kong. Now, what you are going to do is to collect their deep throat saliva specimen. But then they will go home for home quarantine first. Or do you get the specimen before they are allowed to go home? Or would they uh give you the specimen after returning home? I'm worried. And then globally, in the light of the outbreak, governments will try to get ahead of the outbreak. That is, they would like to have universal screening for the uh virus. Now, for the deep throat saliva test, we can see that for the FDA in the USA, they have already given permission to use serological real agent and you get the result in two minutes. And in the UK, they are also um having something like the uh pregnancy test uh kit. So it's like uh testing for your blood sugar or whether you are pregnant. That is, you just um have a drop of blood and then you can tell whether it is positive or negative. It may not be hundred percent accurate, but still it's easy for us to detect the cryptic patients. So, are you going to sort of um get uh universal screening for everybody by using the deep throat saliva test or other tests? Secretary.
For us to enhance the test or the testing, indeed, it is our approach. You can see that all the time we have been extending the scope and we are testing more and more specimens. But you need to bear in mind the testing capability, like the HA's as well as the perfect health laboratory service of the Department of Health. We are also cooperating with the universities, hoping that the testing capability and capacity of the universities can be um mobilized. I'm talking about home testing. For the innovative testing approaches you mentioned, uh, different groups have approached the government as well as the HA in relation to that matter. Uh, I think it's a matter of the validity of the test. That is, whether the test result is credible and reliable. We have an open mind for anything that can help us to enhance our testing capacity and capability will be the same as our direction.
Mr. Jimmy Ng. I would like to go to two nine four. Well, in fact, for the heat-not-burn as products, tests have been carried out, but the government hasn't told us about the method involved. Can we get the details? I want to know whether you are using the same test, the same conventional test for s- traditional cigarettes. That is, you burn it and then instead of heating the heat-not-burn cigarettes when you inhale. Um, they are two different methodologies and the results you get will be very different. So if you do apply the traditional test on the HNB, then the tar has certain coating content uh will not be a reasonable um outcome. Secretary, the DFH will supplement. I just want to tell Mr. Ng that for our laboratory at the DFH, they always apply international standards when it comes to testing. Director, well, the test was carried out by the government laboratory, maybe Dr. Xin. Uh, after the meeting, I can forward the methodology and the details to the honorable member. Well, would there be the problem as mentioned by the member? That is, whether you are going to use the traditional um method to test the HNB products? Um, we'll try to make reference to the international standards. If I'm to elaborate here, it will be too complicated as a sign, as a question of science. Would you like to move on to another question? It's fine. So please give me the information afterwards. Thank you. Next, Dr. Pierre Chen. Thank you. I would like to go to question or rather reply number zero three nine. Well, in two thousand and three, we had SARS. This year, we have the COVID nineteen. Please bear in mind that our healthcare workers are sacrificing. They are risking their lives to fight the epidemic. You're worried about infection. They are also worried. But then they are, they're still reporting to, reporting duty. For those in the infectious wards, they dare not go home. They would rather stay at a hotel or they stay at a place other than their homes. Don't try to make any political, gain any political capital out of this. This is not the right time. Well, uh, patients dare not come to the hospitals. And the HA has said many times that uh most of the non-urgent services have been scaled down. For the medical wards, the occupancy rate is only eighty percent. For the A and E department, again, their attendances um have been lowered. So we're supposed to have enough manpower. Now I come to my question. It's all about management. For reply zero three nine, we get details about the remuneration of the management. I was clear in my question. I'd like to know about the remuneration packages for the management. I'm trying to uh give you the specific grades. Like, I want to know about the general managers as well as the chief managers. For the chief managers, do they work at the hos- hospital headquarters? Is it a grade belonging to the headquarters? Or do we have chief managers at the clusters? HA, Dr. Ko. Well, um, we have a diversity of tasks. Headquarters people will also go to the clusters and vice versa. Um, well, for our managers, they're carrying out administrative work, so they mainly work at the headquarters. I raise this point because we pretty much want to know that within the management, uh, how much money is involved. I've been asking this question many times, many years, so I have to ask again. I'm most interested in this particular grade. This is because we get a number of managers attending the press conferences on a daily basis. I don't think they carry out clinical work. They are carrying out administrative work. So they are at the headquarters and they are being paid for the administrative work. I want to know why in your answers, you haven't been clear about the total expenditure on management or administration. Doctor Ko, I think it is complex. It will be difficult to tell what is administrative, what is not. Even clinically related work can be administrative in nature. Well, there are three of them who are appearing in the press briefings all the time. I'm not going to name them, uh but then may I know, other than working at the headquarters, how and when do they work at hospitals carrying out clinical work? Doctor Ko. Well, generally speaking, for such officers, usually they don't take part directly in clinical work. But then their work usually has a direct relationship with clinical work. So they have to tie in with the uh other members like development, cluster operation, quality control, et cetera. So they do uh work closely with their cluster clinical colleagues. Well, um Mister Oh. I'm grateful to the contribution of the frontline healthcare workers. Secretary. Paragraph nine of your opening remarks. It is said that fifty million dollars have been set aside as an annual recurring provision for ongoing mental health promotion and public education initiative. I think you are lagging behind because owing to one reason or other, like the acts of violence in the past as well as the current outbreak or family disputes. Many people are having mental health problems. Now, the cross of the matter is, other than the activities you mentioned here, you haven't rendered sufficient support. Like you need to wait a long time to get professional help. Shortest will be six months or even um more than a year's time. This is unsatisfactory. For the fifty million dollar recurring provision, other than the mental health promotion and profit education initiatives, are you having taken major measures? Are you going to be specific in your response so that the waiting time can be reduced? Nobody would like to get mental health issues, but then um it will have a bearing on the neighbors. It will also have negative impacts on the family members. So for the fifty million dollar uh provision, do you have any ideas about how to spend the money?
The second question is for the HA. Every year, the government allocates a substantial sum to the HA. But in light of the substantial provision, how can the HA actually um alleviate the work of our healthcare, of our frontline healthcare professionals? Um the manpower position is tight regardless of the epidemic. Um you talk about the special retired and rehire scheme or to promote um associate consultants to consultants or additional allowance for registered nurses, et cetera. But the manpower is still tight with the allocation this year. What specific measures do you have in place to alleviate the manpower shortage for the frontline? Thank you. Thank you very much for the questions about mental health. This is um an area we focus much on. The fifty million dollar provision is mainly for um promotion, research, and public education. You talked about um cer- certain services in the year twenty twenty to twenty one. The HA has some allocated an extra funding of one hundred fifteen point three million dollars, including mental health services um such as the uh social medical collaboration and at the Island East Cluster child and adolescent um mental health programs are set up and these would be reinforced. Apart from reinforcing the services, we hope to reduce waiting time as well. I now invite Doctor Ko to talk about the use of resources by the HA. We acknowledge that our frontline staff are under tremendous stress. On one hand, the um service demand is going up very quickly due to population aging and chronic diseases. As for tackling chronic diseases, we would um hire more staff and reduce wastage and implement retention measures. As for our hiring efforts this year, we plan to hire um non-locally registered doctors from overseas. The net growth in manpower for doctors, nurses, and allied health professionals um would be about four percent. We believe this would help ease the workload of our staff. Next, Mister Xu Ka Chen. Thank you. I believe um our colleagues here at Lesho would all pay tribute to healthcare professionals. On the thirtieth of January this year, Doctor Pierre Chan said at the Health Services Panel that um he is um willing to sacrifice for something that could not be um controlled but um not um for human errors. I think this is what many people think. And um for Hong Kong people with dental issues, um they feel helpless. For reply number one four two, uh the question was about elderly dental services. And in the reply, the government said the um number of um places would only increase to eighty. According to the Strategic Review of Healthcare Manpower Planning and Professional Development, the projection was that in twenty twenty, twenty five, and twenty thirty, uh the shortfall would be ninety-six, one hundred and twenty-one, and one hundred and twenty-seven dentists respectively. The report was compiled in twenty seventeen and now you are increasing the number of places to eighty per annum. I wonder how you can fill the gap. In Hong Kong, there are two thousand six hundred and eleven dentists according to the WHO and OECD. The dentist-to-population ratio should be zero point five per one thousand people. But in Hong Kong, for every one thousand people, we only have zero point three dentists. We are falling far behind um Canada, Australia, UK, et cetera. We talked about a fragmented approach. So um that's the same, can the same be set on the um increase in um dentist places? As for outpatient dental services, FHB number two one seven, Doctor Pierre Chan asked a question about the general public sessions. With um with the exception of um Kuen uh Kowloon City and Changchau clinics, um the utilization of all the other dental clinics um were ninety percent or higher. So for the government dental clinics, they are only open for two days a week or or half a day per uh or only morning or afternoon per day. And in certain districts, um there are, there is only one single clinic, which is not adequate. But for um civil service dental um clinics, there are fifteen on the Hong Kong island. And there is a um Ho- Hong Kong Police College Dental Clinic. So why are you um placing uh or giving higher priority to the police force? Many um patients are age sixty-one or above. For elderly dental services, they are currently only provided to those on OALA or in um RCHs. You might talk about healthcare vouchers, but um they only provide subsidy. Would, would the government um increase the number of dental um cli- clinics and provide dental um filling services? Secretary, thank you. In terms of um dental manpower, there is indeed a shortage according to the report. And given the aging population and meeting public expectations, um we realize that this is the case. We have um increased the number of um dental training places by eighty. At the uh Dental School of HKU, there are about fifty odd places. And it was some increased to about seventy and later to about eighty. We intend to further increase the number of places. But if we are to grow the number of places substantially, um the school would have to assess their own capability. And in terms of um, they would also consider the feasibility of clinical, clinical attachment. So this is something we would explore. For different services, we adopt a risk assessment approach and we give priority to those who are most in need. We also rely on the private market to provide services. Professor Joseph Lee, four minutes. This session is about health. I was shocked that some members are encouraging retribution and they are smearing healthcare professionals and they are asking the Hong Kong Academy of Medicine to not um issue specialist qualifications. How can this um ease the shortage of frontline manpower? Earlier, for the strikes staged by healthcare professionals and the relevant um action, the main idea was to um stop the entry of the virus across the border in order to ease the public healthcare services. All along, we have been protecting the patients as well as um supporting the healthcare professionals. So now I would um ask a few constructive uh questions for reply number one two nine. Four point seven billion dollars would be allocated to support the HA. And there are a number of support measures. But in the actual execution, we saw that departments under the HA, for example, um occupational therapy, physiotherapy, as well as laboratories, as well as staff from the Department of Health, they never enjoy the um concessions or support or subsidies. How can you um evenly um allocate the funding? The same can be said for the DH and HA. And for reply number one three one, the secretary said that a series of um measures are in place to retain talent. For example, a special, a specialty nurse allowance. And in the past, the Nursing Council has been saying that um with the nurse some specialty or qualification, a new pay point should be introduced. And now you are only offering a two thousand dollar allowance, um which is meager. You should retain the specialist nurses because they are experienced. And reply number one three nine, for adolescents under the age of eighteen, the number went up substantially. Um there was a growth of two or three thousand people and the queue is getting longer and longer. The secretary talked about enhanced support, but how can you reduce the waiting time? Question, uh reply number two forty about the um elderly centers. The DH has been saying that the facilities would be reinforced, but for two straight years since twenty seventeen, um the queues have been very long. So how would you tackle the problem? Thank you. And I'd like to invite the HA to um explain the four point seven billion dollar allocation. Some of them are allocated um or or spends on manpower allocation for antiepidemic work. And they also include protective equipment and special allowances for accommodation and to enhance support to the laboratories, purchase of drugs, medical equipment, as well as miscellaneous hospital services for the specialty nurses. We uh place a lot of emphasis on the development of specialty nurses. So the Nursing Council has been um discussing a mechanism in order to um promote the acceptance or acknowledgement of credentials. As for the waiting time for psychiatric services, apart from reinforcing HA resources, we hope to enrich the manpower and services in order to reduce waiting time for the elderly health centers. I would defer to the DH. Thank you.
Chairman, yes, we know that there is a uh increasing demand consistently for elderly uh health centers. Um in the year before us, uh we got um four more centers. Uh the waiting time at one stage was reduced, but recently has uh um increased again. And then in the light of the outbreak recently, our colleagues have to be um deployed to take up the work on other fronts. Uh Doctor Ko, in relation to the antiepidemic fund, other than the work mentioned by the secretary. Now, if colleagues are taking part in relatively higher-risk procedures and treatment activities like the PTs and OTs as well as laboratory colleagues, they will be covered by the allowances as well. And then for specialty nurses, we have the specialty nurse allowance. I think it is a temporary measure. I know that the Nursing Council is still considering the status of specialty nurse. So in the light of the development, uh we will make the relevant adjustments. And then for the mental health needs of child and adolescent um groups, we are aware of the needs. Uh we have the child psychiatric teams. We've also asked our pediatric colleagues to deal with model cases. Thank you. Next, Mister Tony Che, four minutes. Yes, I would like to follow up on two five eight, reply two five, two eight five, sorry. Well, the HSP was set up in the aftermath of the SARS. Well, it is said that as a result of the outbreak currently, it has exposed the government's uh lack of preparedness in dealing with a pandemic. I'm not sure whether such an accusation or such a criticism is right or wrong. The secretary can sort of comment on that. For isolation and quarantine facilities, well, it seems that the government is looking around to get the venues. I would have expected the HSP to have come up with venues ready for such an outbreak so that they can be mobilized immediately. And that brings us to the question of wars and beds. And then for the PPEs of our healthcare worker. And then for the PPEs of our healthcare workers. In the government's reply, we have been told that um the quantities will be good enough for three months. Is it really the case? And how do you come up with such a figure? Would you rely on standards or specifications prevailing um ten plus years ago? Because we've been told that um we don't have enough to run for three months. And what about the public? Today, everybody is talking about using surgical masks. So when the CHP comes up with certain guidelines, have you ever considered the needs of the public? So that there won't be panic uh buying or sourcing for uh surgical masks on the part of everyone. I think in January, the Department of Health came up with a detailed paper on the plan of preparedness. You don't need to elaborate on that because I have already read that paper. Secretary, thank you, Doctor. Thank you, Mr. Chair, for your question. Indeed, this CHP was set up in the aftermath of the SARS outbreak. And the CHP covers a full range of tasks. They deal with the prevention and control of both infectious diseases and non-comiscible diseases. Now, for this um outbreak, uh it came very quickly and it was urgent. And then it is a novel disease, and our knowledge of this novel virus, in particular at the early stage, was not much, and it was only with the passage of time. With research and evidence, uh our knowledge has grown. Now, for the CHP, as Mr. Chair had said, has always got some um isolation facilities ready. Well, in fact, as early as uh the beginning of January, even before we had a confirmed case, we've raised our response level to serious instead of just alert. In other words, across government departments, there was con- coordination to see what we should do in the event of a confirmed case. And for the Department of Health, we have been organizing drills, so we know what our uh respective roles are. On the twenty-third of January, we got the first confirmed case, and then the developments were rapid. And then in March, the picture has changed. We have got returnees from many different places against the background of the global outbreak. So we've got many imported cases, since we have a large number of returnees. And the overall figures of confirmed cases have gone up. Now, for the isolation facilities, quarantine facilities, we have been boosting the numbers. For Dr. Cole, for isolation wards, isolation beds, tier-two beds, and plans to uh step down the recovering uh patients so that they are uh kept in the community, etc., all such are being explored. Secretary, please uh be quick because there's still some members on the waiting list. For the PPEs, the inadequacy of the PPEs, Dr. Cole has said that uh it has eased on uh in relation to the hospital authority. But um both the mainland as well as the uh with rest of the world are demanding more and more of them. And then uh for our quarantine work and isolation work, that would um mean that we need a large quantity of PPEs for the sake of protecting our frontline offices as well. So when it comes to procurement of PPEs, we'll continue with our efforts and we've seen improvement as well. The last three, because uh we need to hand over the venue to the HSP at twelve forty, so you need to stop when your four minutes are up. Pun Shouping, Fernando Zheng, and En Zheng, and then we will wind up this particular session. Four minutes, Mr. Pun. I would like to talk about reply one seventy. Well, for the seven clusters, understand that for island west, the number of supporting staff members have been falling all the time from one thousand four hundred down to one three seven seven. So I want to know uh the reason behind the drop. I understand that eighty-seven point one billion dollars uh will be set aside for recurrent provision. And four point seven billion dollars more will be given to the HA to fight the epidemic. The money is also important for retention of staff. You have my support. Now, the outbreak is still serious, the number of confirmed cases is increasing. It is exerting a lot of pressure on the healthcare sector. We are most grateful to the healthcare workers of the HA as well as the D of H for their efforts. Now, many experts have said that it is important to reduce social gatherings and suffer the communic- uh the transmission links in order to fight the epidemic. So we have got the provision of social gatherings. Unfortunately, regrettably, there was a lawmaker who attended a bar gathering. Should there be any confirmed cases as a result, it would be adding to our burden. Now, uh the outbreak is still serious, we cannot afford to be relaxed about the uh measures. Well, in some countries, um serious cases do not have ventilators. And even for patients who pass away, they don't even have enough space to keep the corpse, the the bodies. Now, already the response level is serious, can we still escalate to a higher level? And what can you do to cope with it? I am interested in that it uh cuff uh in um as well as the manpower levels required. Secretary, yes, currently the response level is emergency. This is based on our overall risk assessment, as well as the number of new cases on a daily basis and our analysis about the spread between imported cases and local cases. As Mr. Pun has said, we need to um reduce gatherings and we need to increase our social distances. Uh therefore, I've issued directives. Other than relying on self-discipline, uh we have also got the statutory backing to reduce uh gatherings. Well, the member asked in the event that we have a major outbreak, say if we got a large number of patients, whether we are ready. Well, in fact, we have got a contingency plan. For the COVID nineteen pandemic, even before the WHO defined it as a pandemic, we already um may know what our preparedness uh plan is about, so that across the government departments, they are aware uh of their roles and what they have to do, what um preparations they need to come up with. And the HA can also tell us about their supporting staff. Dr. Cole, brief please. Well, for the uh supporting staff, yes, indeed, they're busy and they have a heavy workload. It has never been easy to get the care-related support staff. And then the wastage rate has been uh ten percent or so. Recently, we have enhanced the remuneration package, increasing the salary raise and increasing the promotional uh opportunities. Well, for Hong Kong West clusters, well, usually um the workers have to come from other districts, and it is not so easy to recruit people to work in the island west cluster, but we'll do our best to get more people to go there. Fernando Zheng, just now, Chairman, some establishment camp members were trying to um resort to cultural revolution-like rhetoric and talk about retribution. We are here to fight the epidemic. How come that they're still interested in political struggles? Now, earlier on, the healthcare workers resorted to industrial action to press the HA to provide adequate PPEs and to come up with adequate negative pressure isolation wards and beds and ICUs, and they also asked for the closure of the border. I think this is what everybody would like to see, that is flattening the earth, the curve. We want to control the outbreak so that the public healthcare system won't collapse. It is a reasonable demand, and I hope that the political animals won't continue to engage in such activities. Recently, there have been some media reports, and we have been told by medical staff that for the ICU facilities with negative pressure would be inadequate. Of course, at this moment, um there are still uh such uh facilities, but then it is a matter of uneven distribution. For usage, one hundred negative pressure beds, but only two ICU wards with negative pressure. So you need to uh have some coordination. There are only fourteen patients with critical conditions. We hope that there will be failure. But then if the number is to go up, we are faced with a crisis. I will urge the Bureau to pay attention to this possibility. Yesterday, there was this case of a Nepalese family. They were already in a quarantine center. The son was confirmed, but then you sent the father to the hospital. I think this is just outrageous. How can you mix up the identities in the process? Do you simply call out his name or what? Tell us what happened. So for the D of H, do you have interpreters? Don't you have? And were there any communication problems at that time? So please explain to us what happened. Is it because they're ethnic minorities and you haven't provided adequate re- uh services to them? Secretary, I will ask the HA and the D of H to answer the questions.
HA, please. Thank you. Doctor Chang um talked about the negative pressure ICU beds. All along, um each hospital would only have a small number of um ICU negative pressure beds. All along, the HA's mechanism is for the clusters or hospitals to support each other. For an area with a high demand for ICU beds, patients would be transferred to other ICU wards. So this is a longstanding mechanism. Since the start of the epidemic, the deployment of isolation beds and other resources, the um our Central Command Committee would help coordinate the work. DH, please. For the mix-up of the confirmed um patient, yesterday, we expressed our apologies as for serving ethnic minorities. Um we have translated our promotion materials to different languages. And we also provide translation services, and we would investigate the um roots of the incident. And as far as we understand, the test um report and test form were in order. So it was potentially a mix-up of different um members of the family. Doctor Chang, zero seven seven and zero seven eight. The numbers show that the number of specialist doctors have been going down in the past three years. Yet, the waiting time for patients is getting longer and longer. For certain um clusters, for example, the medicine and um uh osmology um services of Hong Kong West cluster, the waiting time is more than three years. Uh recently, for urgent um ophthalmology cases, patients had to wait one week. I do not know um how, what we should make of this. If this continues, how many more patients in Hong Kong would have to suffer? We once recommended the hiring of non-locally trained doctors from overseas because this would only be to the benefit of Hong Kong. In twenty nineteen, you have a new budget of um thirty-six million dollars for non-locally trained doctors. And in the new financial year, twenty twenty to twenty-one, it will increase to ninety-two million dollars. But as of now, you have only hired tw- twenty-two non-locally trained doctors. How can you be confident of securing more? We suggest providing more incentives, and yet you talked about consulting the trade. So of course, um the trade would be against the idea. In that case, what are you going to do, Secretary? We place much um focus on manpower provision and we adopt a multi-pronged approach beyond just hiring non-locally trained students. We would increase the number of medical training places, we would have a um retired and rehiring scheme, etc. Well, Secretary, I would have to stop you here. We understand very well that every doctor listening to the dialogue or discussion would know that specialist doctors um rely a lot on experience. Experience is essential. They must have at least eight to ten years of experience and they so um we would not uh have a an experienced doctor um younger than the age of forty. You said you are training up doctors, but this would take time. We have so many patients um waiting for specialist services in an urgent manner, so what are we going to do? I would invite the HA to talk about their work on um enhancing the hiring of non-locally trained doctors. HA, please. Thank you. This year, um we have carried out um proactive work in hiring non-locally trained students, including overseas promotion and uh enhancing their training opportunities in Hong Kong. In light of the re- earlier social incidents and recent epidemic, our recruitment work has been affected. And so is the hiring of non-locally trained students or doctors. Recently, the U has en- has has announced that they will hire um a- any doctor from overseas. Uh two or three years later, when the contract is up, they cannot stay on, so of course, people would be reluctant to go. So you should um really think about how you can attract more doctors from overseas. That would be the best solution. The afternoon session will begin at two and the meetings adjourned.